Welcome to Village Board of Trustees Special Board Meeting. Today is Monday, June 8th, and it's now 5:30. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let's once again remain standing and think about our first responders and our police officers and being put in harm's way during these times. Thank you. Okay, the reason for tonight's Village Board Special Meeting is to present a resolution authorizing modifications to the Village of Suffering Tables and Chairs Program to assist local restaurants reopen in accordance with New York State Executive Orders issued by the Governor of New York State. So, Mr. Magrino, if you could provide an overview to the board as we've been going back and forth over the weekend for clarifications.
Sure, did you want to do a quick roll call?
Yes, I always forget the roll call, I'm sorry. Trustee Barone?
Present.
Trustee Megan Corrigan?
Present.
Trustee Albert?
Present.
And Trustee Gerard?
Present.
And also with us is Rob Magrino and Ms. Amy Paffenrod, the Village Clerk, and myself. All right, thank you.
Okay, so, as everyone knows, the governor for our area will be going into Phase Two starting tomorrow in terms of the reopening. A bit of a surprise last week was that Phase Two would include outdoor dining, which I don't believe was part of Phase Two before, but irrespective of that, that is where we find ourselves. What many municipalities throughout the state have been doing, and the region really, is trying to work with, in particular restaurants, to help, you know, the restaurants that have been closed for all this time, to, you know, kind of think outside the box and find another way to allow them to open and serve people, and obviously it serves restaurants' business perspective well, but it also provides something to the, you know, the general public, being able to use the restaurants. So, what we, and each municipality is a little different, and based upon what Suffering has already implemented, you know, we've come up with basically two types of permits to permit outdoor dining. As you know, the governor has permitted, as part of the reopening plan, that restaurants could have expanded outdoor dining. So, the municipality comes in, in this case Suffering comes in, in terms of its zoning code. So, for instance, restaurants, certain restaurants that have parking lots, really are not supposed to use those for outdoor dining under ordinary circumstances, under zoning. So, what this resolution does is it authorizes the building inspector to issue what's called temporary outdoor dining permits. So, that's the first permit we're talking about, a temporary outdoor dining permit that allows someone to, or restaurant, that has a private property, so for example, its parking lot area, for example, to have outdoor dining there where ordinarily would not be permitted to have that. That's permitted by the state, and again, the only thing that Suffering is doing is saying, you know what, we're going to allow that too. We're going to say temporarily, the zoning doesn't apply in terms of Wall Street parking, things of that nature, and restaurants under certain circumstances can have, can use that area for tables and chairs. So, that's called temporary outdoor dining, and a number of the, you know, regulations per se, or as you might say, are listed, and that would be a permit, that would be an application to the building department because it's really a zoning type issue. The intention here is not to make it, it's not a site plan that somebody has to submit. I purposely use the word sketch plan, so if somebody would take basically a plan that they have on the property, and, you know, I wouldn't suggest using stick figures, but, you know, something between stick figures and, and regular, you know, a full-blown plan is what the building department will be looking for. And what that would be is, excuse me, mostly from a safety perspective for, you know, fire issues, fire-related issues, make sure there's appropriate areas of ingress and egress, make sure the tables are adequately spaced, things of that nature, and all other rules apply, obviously, any, you know, Health Department rules, State Liquor Authority rules. And I'll just note on that, on that end, that the State Liquor Authority has indicated that if a restaurant already has a permit to sell alcohol, and they want to expand onto another part of their own property, that's not otherwise covered by the license, they can do it, provided that they show that the local municipality has allowed them to expand onto other parts of their property, and sends a copy of the plan to the SLA. And again, I don't know that it'll apply to many restaurants in the village, but, but that's the first type of permit, is temporary outdoor dining permit. The second is really just an expansion of the current sidewalk permit that was authorized a couple of years ago by the Village Board that allows restaurants that front village sidewalks to make application to put tables and chairs on municipal property. We already have those permits in place, it's an ongoing situation, there's insurance, they have to get insurance, naming the village as additional insured, and indemnify the village, but it's, again, another opportunity for restaurants to provide, you know, expanded seating while nobody's allowed to be inside, at least for now. So, the second part of the resolution is for a, an extension of the administrative permits that are already authorized for outdoor dining on village sidewalks. The change, the biggest change, I'll defer to Larry and/or Amy on this, but the biggest change would be, and many other municipalities are doing this as well, is instead of just limiting it to a certain width of the sidewalk, it's to permit the use of the entire sidewalk in front of their establishment. Now, that would be in conjunction with the village maybe blocking off some parking spots so that pedestrian traffic can keep going. So, again, that's an issue that when somebody comes in for one of these permits, if they don't already have one, they would show the plan, it would be reviewed by the building department, but ultimately the permit is issued by the Village Clerk's office, again, after the building department, Department of Works and the police weigh in. And again, that would be, give a little extra area for folks to put out tables and chairs, you know, residents can enjoy, you know, additional opportunities for the outdoor dining, and pedestrians would be safe in terms of blocking off those parking spots so that, you know, the pedestrian traffic could continue. Obviously, it would have a little bit of an impact on parking, but again, it depends on how many restaurants. So, yeah, just to, I know we've been talking a lot, but it's two different things, one's a temporary outdoor dining permit, and the second is a administrative permit for outdoor dining on sidewalks, and that's what the board is considering tonight. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll certainly answer. Except I can.
Is there a date? I was just going to ask, is there a date that this runs through? In other words, these temporary permits that they'd be able to get?
Right, that's a good question. What we've done, because, you know, it's a unique time, what we, and I believe it's in the resolution, if it's not, we can add it. Oh yes, it's in number 11. Any temporary dining permit issued pursuant to the resolution shall expire on December 31st, or seven days after the state of New York authorizes restaurants to operate at 100% capacity. So, the reasoning is if, maybe miraculously, in September, October, you know, the state says you can open up to 100% capacity, then, you know, that you wouldn't have the need for the additional seating.
Okay. So, this will stay in effect even if they're allowed to eat inside with 50%, correct? Okay, perfect.
Rob, I have a, I have a few questions. So, if there's an establishment that currently is allowed outdoor seating, before any approval with a temporary permit or expansion, is the, is the state resetting what's allowed outside in terms of the amount of space? So, if somebody is currently, say, approved for six tables outside, and because of social distancing, the state is saying, well, you know what, based on your configuration, you really can only do four, and then, then if they're able, they want to apply for an expansion, maybe their number goes back to six, or to eight, or whatever, is there going to be, first, some kind of a re-establishment of what they're allowed because of social distancing?
That's an interesting question. I don't see it going backwards. In other words, if somebody already has approval, as far as the village is concerned, just from a zoning perspective, they're permitted, right? So, whatever they have, they have. Now, the governor is allowing the outdoor dining, subject to, and the opening, I should say, of these restaurants for outdoor dining, subject to those regulations that you mentioned, or guidelines regarding social distancing. So, I mean, again, this is hypothetical, but yeah, so hypothetically, if somebody has some tables and chairs out that are not six feet apart, they probably should set them up, and frankly, I would imagine the public would ask for the same, that they be, you know, in accordance with the governor's guidelines for social distance. Interestingly, and I just as a note, and I don't know if it applies to anywhere suffering, but bars that have, if you have an outdoor bar, and this, you know, just as a point of information, which I thought, you know, I hadn't anticipated, but if you have an outdoor bar, you can go to the outdoor bar, again, provided social distancing guidelines are going to play, you know, you don't have to order, you don't have to order food, basically, is, is, is one of the rules. But again, whether before or after the fact, and under one of these permits, you do have to abide by the governor's, you know, social distancing guideline.
Okay, so, somebody could apply for an expansion, and then it says, well, you know what, based on the guidelines, you really can't fit any more than you have. Or, or you can use the extra space, but it's not going to, it might not net out to anything additional for that, for that business.
I suppose that's possible.
Yeah, yeah. Does anybody, I don't know if any department heads are on the call, but does anybody know how wide our sidewalks are in the CBD?
Paul, I'm going to ask the department heads that are on, I mean, there's Kathy Mills and Charles Swickie, a couple of them there, and Joe Hunt's there. If they want, they can raise their hand, and I'll call on them.
I know that I actually was involved in measuring some of the sidewalks, and some are upwards of nine feet and greater. Eight, eight feet probably at the minimum, certain locations may be, I know nine would be about it.
Where's that, where's that, over by the Indian Restaurant, right? I don't remember the new name.
If, yeah, if we're talking just the municipal portion of the sidewalk?
Yeah.
Right, so I know that I counted off about nine feet. Some areas, such as trustee Corrigan is stating, have more area because they have a portion of the sidewalk, and that would be at Androcka.
Androcka, thank you.
They have more than nine feet, and maybe eight feet would be the shortest, but that would have to be confirmed with the building department.
Yeah, so, so really, you know, you're really, you're really pushing the limits when you consider whatever the size of the table is and how far people are apart. I mean, you're probably, you know, some of these, some of these places with frontage, I mean, you might, the best chance you might have is two tables diagonal from each other, one is probably the best bet you're going to get in some cases. I mean, I know there's exceptions, and some places have their own lots, but I'm just thinking in terms of the sidewalk, it's probably going to be a challenge.
The smallest, the smallest section, you're right, would be one, maybe two, on the smallest storefront and the narrowest sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah.
But if I'm not mistaken, the way I read the, the resolution, is that they can apply to also expand on a neighboring property if the neighboring landlord or whatever approves, is that correct?
Yes, that is, and within the application, the, the other owner would have to agree to that.
Right, so that would be a way that they could get more tables than otherwise because they would be using an adjacent lot.
Yeah, certain, certain restaurants in the village have three, three or maybe four storefronts wide, so now you're looking at maybe six tables in front of one particular restaurant.
Yeah.
And then if you, if you expand out on that, maybe you can get seven or eight in, you know, one in either direction.
And also, you mentioned bars, Mr. Magrino, are bars as well, even if they're not really a restaurant, if it's just a bar, can they have an outdoor seating area as well?
The way I read it, only if it's already existing.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I take that back, I take that back. You mean, a bar that doesn't serve food?
Right.
That's a good question. The way I was reading it was, if you have an existing outdoor dining and bar, you can do that. I don't believe you can set up a bar outside.
I don't think we have
Yeah, I can't think of that.
A standalone bar.
Isn't there one on Chestnut Street, like across from my barber or something? I don't remember the
They closed.
Oh, they closed, okay. I think it was called Georgie Porgies or something.
Right.
Okay, Rob, on, under point number seven, the first, the first sentence, it seems like at the end of the sentence, it might be missing a few words, I'm not just sure what this, what this means, after the comma, I don't know if that says, that's supposed to say, only if used for out, it just says, and outdoor dining?
Right.
I don't know what the rest of that's supposed to say.
Do you have Sunday through Thursday?
No, he means before that.
No, before, the sentence before that says, no greater than 50% of the required onsite off-street parking area shall be obstructed, comma, and outdoor dining. I don't, I don't know if that's supposed to say, comma, only if used for outdoor dining, or something, I don't know what it's supposed to say.
Yeah, I'm going to have to look at the early version, try and, 35% shall be obstructed. I think it's, and maybe utilized for outdoor dining, and maybe utilized for outdoor dining, but I'll double check that before we're done.
There was, there was, there was another thing that was possibly a typo. Let me just try and find it, I, here it is, number seven, where it says, no greater than 50%, should be obstructed, but there, there was a word, close, C-L-O-S-E, that I think should be closed, C-L-O-S-E-D.
Right, I think Amy fixed that to say Friday and Saturday activities shall close.
Friday.
Yeah.
Saturday activities shall close at 1:00
Perfect, at 10:00 PM, okay, perfect, then you fixed it.
Is that the time? The one I have says 1:00 AM, I don't think that's right.
Yeah, no, I think it should be 10:00 PM.
Right.
Yeah, the one I'm looking at says 10:00 PM, but, but it said, shall be closed at 10:00 PM, and I think if that was the wording, it should be with a D at the end.
Yes, we took out, we took out B, so shall, shall close at?
10:00 PM.
Friday and Saturday, you want it to be 11:00, right?
Yes, 11:00.
Yeah, because right now it's a Sunday, the Thursday at 11:00, I think that was what tended to be 10:00.
That should be 10:00, right, that's correct.
And then Friday, Saturday, 11:00.
Just, Rob, just confirm the times that we just discussed. So, the time, Sunday through Thursday shall close at 10:00 PM?
Correct.
Friday and Saturday activities shall close at 11:00 PM?
Right, correct.
10:00 PM and 11:00 PM, okay, I just want to make sure that no music permitted until 9:00 PM. So, music is permitted until 10:00 PM, do you have 10:00 PM?
Mine shows 9:00, but again, that's up to the board for discussion.
Okay, so on the discussion there, that 10:00 PM would coincide with the village code.
For what, Sunday through Thursday? Or are you talking about the music?
The music.
Music.
Whatever it refers.
Is that all nights, or is that just weekend, or is that seven, seven nights?
All, seven days a week.
So, the code is 10?
Yes.
I think it should be consistent with the village code.
Agreed.
Agree.
I agree as well.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, are any
Can I just say one thing before you go?
Yep, of course.
I just suggest Friday, Saturday, and holiday activities, because I don't know when the holidays are exactly, but.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah, yeah, I'm good with that, too.
And holidays, okay.
I'm sorry.
Wait a minute, if a holiday, if a holiday's Monday, do we want it to be extended to Sunday night, or do we want it to extend it to Monday night?
That's a good question.
I think, I think the intention would be, we want to give Sunday to be like Friday and Saturday, right?
Yeah.
I agree.
So, so day prior to a holiday?
Well, it's, the holidays defined by the village, or by, I don't know, good question.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, for example, 4th of July is a Saturday, so I know the national day is the 3rd, which is Friday, that's a Friday anyway.
Right, but sometimes, like, maybe, maybe Labor Day is a Monday, so the question is, on Sunday night, whatever, September, whatever.
Oh, I see what you're saying, right.
Yeah.
Sunday night would count as a Saturday night.
Right, I think that would count as a holiday. I think that's the, I think with what you have, that would count.
But, but the question is that the holiday's the Monday, and we're talking about the Sunday allowing businesses to stay open later, as if it was a Friday or Saturday, but not necessarily stay open late on the Monday holiday, or maybe we want to allow that as well, that's up to board, you know, discussion here.
I would like it to close on Monday night at normal time, but stay open on Sunday night as if it was a Saturday.
Well, we're, we're talking about one hour, and we're talking about people that kind of need to do whatever they can do to make some money, and we're talking about an hour, and we're talking about music, like, you know, I don't know.
So, this is, this is, I should read Fri, since we really want to kickstart the economy, hopefully here, and it works, why don't we just say Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and holidays? I don't see anything wrong with, with that, opening up to that, whatever the, you know, the defined holidays are.
Right, I agree.
Sunday, you know, let, Sunday, Sunday's a big day, a big driver for going out to dinner. So, I
Right now, any night is a big night for a driver going out to dinner.
I haven't been out to dinner in months.
So, I think Friday, I mean, if you, if you agree, well, change is the Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and holidays, right?
I'm good with that.
I agree.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Great.
So, Friday through Sunday and holidays?
Yes.
Right.
If, if the holiday's on a Wednesday, so be it.
Right.
Most of the holidays on Mondays.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, my question is surrounding safety, who is going to be in charge of putting up, how are we going to manage the parking spots and keeping pedestrians safe? Is that going to be done by the Fire Department and the Police Department, or DPW, or?
We have 550 feet of barriers that will be installed outside of the restaurants that are participating, blocking off the parking in that area for pedestrians to transverse around the restaurant.
Do you have a list of those restaurants already?
Not really, because
Okay.
Everyone is waiting on the outcome of this meeting, and, I mean, I know that they are anticipating it, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is that enough?
I don't know. It may, it may be, and Charles, Charles Swickie's on, on, he can possibly speak to those things. If we have 10 restaurants participating, and we need 100 feet of barrier for 10 feet, you know what I'm saying, then we don't have enough. Some storefronts are only 25 foot wide, and we would only take maybe one parking spot, maybe two. A parking length is 15 feet, so we may have enough.
Charles Swickie is unmuted if he wants to speak.
Yeah, hi. Well, Joe Hunt had, as he has in the past, worked very hard in working with the county to get these barriers, so what we, what Joe has able to acquire was one trailer load, which, as the mayor had indicated, is approximately 550 linear feet. Now, if it comes to that we need more, then we can ask for more, hopefully we would be able to get more, but that's what we have dedicated for us, and Joe and his men are picking them up tomorrow morning, 6:30.
Okay, Charles, there's no, there is no problem with that being a state road and us putting barricades on it, right? That shouldn't be
You bring up a good point. We have in the past done something similar for property owners, or they have done that for themselves for a particular project, maybe replacing windows or a facade or whatever, but it was, it was short-lived, it was one location. I would say that we would, we might have an issue with the DOT, or at least we, we, you know, we pretend, the potential is there, we may want to reach out to them to make sure that they're okay with it. I think, you know, this is kind of a statewide, county-wide issue that people are trying, as, you know, the board is trying to do here, is to get, get these businesses, you know, back, back to work. But it is, it is a New York State DOT roadway, and they have, you know, jurisdiction in the roadway itself. Now, our sidewalks, we have the jurisdiction, but the roadway itself, they essentially have the jurisdiction there, so.
I know that we're not going to be impeding on the crosswalks
On the traffic.
On the flow of traffic.
Right.
And they are encouraging this type of reopening
Yep.
With the proper safety barriers in place. I don't see, we don't see a problem with it.
If we are, let's say Just a quick note, we do have at least one person raising their hand. Will we have a public participation section here?
Yes.
Okay, so when, when that comes, we'll call on the people.
Okay.
I was just going to ask a quick question. If we're, let's say, a little bit short somewhere, I mean, can we use a cone instead of a barricade? I mean, you know, a couple cones, something like that?
We would have to assess it and apply it and see what method would work best. So, if we have the barricades at the beginning and the end, and there's a section that's open in the middle, maybe we could cone that.
That's what I'm thinking, just to save concern, that's exactly what I was thinking about. Another question I had is, once we install these things, are they staying up for the duration of this period of time, or they come up and go down each day depending on when the restaurant is operating?
Let's, let's, for now, we're going to leave them up, and we're going to see how successful we are.
Yeah. Okay, that's great, that's fine. I'm just curious what's involved.
And, and some, you know, some places might not want to open for, say, six tables. It's a lot of work for restaurants to open for six tables. I think it's a matter of giving the opportunity and the choice, seeing that they didn't have an opportunity and a choice to close, you know?
One issue that I picked up on here, and something to the board to consider, now, I believe you have it until the end of the year, December 31st. So, I mean, we have potentially weather issues, snow and so on, you might want to take that in consideration and possibly shorten that. We obviously don't want to have to deal with, you know, clearing sidewalks, we have the barricades and so on, so We have the barricades and so on, so forth, so just something to think about, maybe want to make that a month shorter.
Well, what we do with the tables and chairs permit application that may be, um, something to look at is that tables and chairs usually ends on October thirty-first for that particular reason. So maybe we should consider that, or make it that we are able to change it at any time by board resolution.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Or, I'm sorry, go ahead, Michael. I mean, Robert.
Uh, my concern would be, you know, once you give a certain date, a person expects it to be that date, so, you know, I should just pick the date tonight. The reason December thirty-first was chosen was, you know, again, give people an opportunity, what we could do, uh, I'm sorry, people an opportunity to, you know, expand their business. I don't know that there'll be a lot of activity of outdoor dining, you know, frankly, after October thirty-first in any event, or even, you know, after middle of October. But, uh, what we could do maybe to address Charles's concerns is that if they make this part of the permit application, uh, if, you know, there's a weather, you know, weather-related event, or an anticipated weather-related event, give notice, we'll have all of their, uh, you know, information, give notice that they have to remove the tables and chairs, have to, and we'll remove the barricades, uh, until a red, a weather-related event is done. That's an option, or make it an earlier date.
Right.
Because that might, you know, um, that actually would hold true to, as well, if, say, we're gonna have an Irene situation or a Sandy situation, not necessarily just a snowstorm. You know, that is a truck route, and if you have a lot of trucks because people, you know, need to get emergency services or whatever, and there's some really bad weather flying through, I think that's a good stipulation, whether, um, we should put it, something in there about the weather, just so that, um, you know, we cover ourselves for that, for sure.
So some, we can cooperate that, Rob, and, uh,
Yeah.
weather permitting, or?
Or, uh, you know, emergency storm, I, I want to say weather permitting, because then there gets, gonna be kind of like, whoa, it's gonna rain really hard today. You know, does that mean I can't, you know, we have to take everything in? Um, maybe, could it be like in case of, um, a named storm? I don't even know if we want to go that far with it, like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I think it would be simpler if, if we use the term weather-related event. Uh, look, the village is authorizing this permit. My suggestion is make it, if the village determines that a weather-related event, uh, requires the removal of, you know, the tables and chairs, that you'll remove them upon, you know, order of the village. I think it, you know, I think it makes it a little clearer, and, and, you know, like, it, it's, it's not the village's intentions to remove it, um, you know, for a rainstorm, or I don't, I don't know. But again, I leave that to Charles and, uh, the police chief and building. If they all kind of say, hey, you know, this is the type of thing, it's gonna be a problem, we need these tables removed.
Well, my recommendation is, as the mayor had mentioned, uh, the October thirty-first date, I think that would be, um, better, um, suited for what we're trying to do here, because, um, to take these barricades back and forth, take them down, remove them. Um, if we had a date, a drop-dead date of, say, the end of October, let's say, we could remove them, and we know where we're at, and, and so on and so forth. The other, the other thing I wanted to mention is, you know, we are borrowing these, um, barriers from the county. We had borrowed them in the past for a weekend or, or so. Uh, this is much longer term, so we, we need to, um, have a further discussion with them to make sure that we, in fact, can hold on to them that long.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think, I think with extending, so there's a possibility, as, as Trustee Corrigan was saying, with the, um, potential emergency or, 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 or weather-related events, that's, that's a good, uh, point, and even if we restrict parking in the downtown area, that would, that would bring out, um, discontinue the outdoor dining. So it's, it's something where we're gonna need the flexibility built into the resolution for us to have the authority, either through the building inspector, um, to cancel the outdoor dining due to these events, or parking restrictions, something like that.
At, at the, uh, you know, at the decision, at the discretion of the village. Um, I do have another question. What about deliveries for restaurants that have blocked off the parking area for pedestrians? How are they gonna take deliveries, because then a delivery truck might be in the street, actually, blocking traffic? It's a narrow street, it's only one lane in each direction, plus the parking.
They have to, they have to abide by the, the parking, um, the deli-, the, uh, loading and unloading zones. That would be for anything. Yeah, I don't think there are any unloading zones in front of restaurants.
Okay, that's all I just wanted to ask.
I don't think so. I don't think so either.
Right, right, good point.
Um, where, so where we're going to allow, to set up these barriers and redirect pedestrians onto the street, is that only going to be in places where there's currently parking? I'm thinking of, um, I know Oleole is closed, I don't know if the Tapas place is gonna be closed, but I know Oleole, but I'm thinking that if, you know, they own that whole corner. We don't want, I, 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 I kind of feel uncomfortable putting pedestrians out on Orange Ave. If you think about the Orange Avenue side of that, of that, um, building.
Well.
I mean, that's, that's pretty much putting people out where traffic would be.
Yeah, I don't think we would do that, but with Ole, Ole being closed, I mean, if we consider it, we can consider it, but there could be, you know, that's an exigent circumstance that we would have to explore, and I don't think we would do that on Orange Avenue.
Well, there's, there's another restaurant just beyond.
Yeah, but there's no, there's no parking lane.
That's what I mean. Yeah, the Mexican place, too, there's no parking lane.
Right, I would say this, this, this Tequila Sally Lyman, it, it's also in the same situation. They're on the, sort of the other corner there with, uh, with Wayne Avenue and Orange Avenue.
And they really don't even have a sidewalk.
Uh, I think they have a sidewalk.
Yeah, it's not.
They, they do, but it's very narrow.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that, yeah, that.
And all of this could be contingent on the approval process by the building inspector to satisfy the permit requirements and the safety aspect of it. Good points.
Okay, and then, uh, last point I had written down here is that, um, if we don't have enough barriers, and we're directing people out, I, I mean, I'm, I'm a little nervous about that. Um, should we consider, and can we temporarily lower the speed limit coming through, on, because there's not a, there's not a parking buffer? People are off the sidewalk. Uh, I'm just thinking if there's not enough barriers, and we've got people, you know, walking in an open space, that might only be coned off or something.
Well, like, right, like I said, if we don't have enough barriers, we're not going to put anybody, have pedestrians walking in the parking lane, we'll come up with more barriers. We, we're not gonna allow it to happen if we don't have the barrier. That restaurant, in particular restaurant, would have to wait for their approval until we have the proper barrier in place.
Okay, so, so in that case, this might become a first-come, first-served basis with the barriers, in case we have more requests than barriers?
Well, if you go through, you know, I would say yes, and if you go through the length of the barriers and the restaurants that we're talking about, I would say that we have enough, five hundred and fifty feet of barrier. Right, we're gonna be right there.
Okay.
So what's the board's pleasure in terms of the date, or? The October thirty-one, I'm looking at my calendar, November one is a Saturday, so maybe you want to make it November two or something, just to give you that weekend?
I think that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. November two for the expiration.
Does that mean it, that they can do it through the second, or that the second, they can't do it?
Midnight, twelve oh one, November second.
But that's a Sunday, right?
That's a.
That's a Sunday.
Monday.
Oh, oh, the Monday, okay, that makes more sense.
Twelve oh one, November second.
Okay.
So Sunday, November first, up until it's eleven o'clock, that would be it?
Yes.
And then, uh, I have two other proposed changes.
Because that's the beginning of the weekend.
Or three, I should say.
November.
One change I had, uh, I discussed with the mayor was, uh, in number fourteen. Uh, and again, this is on, and actually, let me go back for a moment. That date, by the way, is, is for the outdoor dining permit for the folks in the, um, who have it on private property. So that's really not the ones that we're talking about, snow-related emergency, but we can, you know, for consistency, we can leave it, and we can add that, um, as another point for the, uh, sidewalk permits.
Yes.
If the people on private property, if you have somebody who's hardy and wants to on December thirtieth eat outside, I don't think we should limit it on private property, this is just on the sidewalk.
Okay, that's up to you. That's, that's, that's where the date, December thirty-first is.
On point eleven?
Uh, correct. Right now, I'm sorry, I should have brought that up earlier. Right now, you correct me if I'm wrong, I think you brought it up earlier, mayor. Uh, I believe it's October fifteenth for the sidewalk?
October thirty-first.
And then we said we would extend it through that weekend to November, Sunday night, November first, that would, that would be the last time on the sidewalk.
Okay, so you want to leave number eleven as December thirty-first, correct?
That's for private property, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And you want to, and, and we would have to add, uh,
So it's twelve oh one AM on November second?
I'm gonna add another resolution paragraph, and Amy, I'll, I'll give you the details on this tomorrow, uh, if you're listening. Be it further resolved that any permit, and this is at the end with respect to sidewalks, uh, issued pursuant to this resolution shall expire at twelve oh one AM, November two.
Yes.
Twenty twenty, or seven days after one hundred percent occupancy is authorized, whatever, sooner.
Yes.
And, uh,
You did say November, correct, not December?
Yeah, yeah, November two, or if I meant it's November two. And the other, uh, one I was going to add, even with that, uh, and the village reserves the right uh, to suspend any permit issued pursuant to this resolution in the event of a weather-related or other emergency, uh, or other event as determined to be necessary by the village to protect, uh, health and safety.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And, uh, sorry to keep adding, going back to number fourteen. Did I say this right?
Uh, this is the one we were discussing, yeah.
Uh, any permit shall be revocable, I think it just makes it easier at the discretion, and this is for the private property. Uh, the building inspector, finding, finding that there's been a violation, that person can apply to the village board for it to be reinstated, so that we would just take out village board, the first bill, village board to make that building inspector.
Or his or her designee?
Or his designee, his or her designee. And again, the person would have a right to petition the village board to get it back. And then, uh, I would also add that as a resol-, as part of the resolution to, for the sidewalk dining.
Like, yeah, it is, it's already in that, in there, but we double-check, we'll make sure. And, as, Robin, no fee associated with either aspect of it.
Right, and I just did that based on, you know, what some other municipalities have done, that's up to the village board, how it wants to handle it.
Right, so I, I make the recommendation, no fee to the business owner for this application and inspection. We need to get, we need to get the economy up and running. So I don't know if anyone objects to that language.
Well, it's both, the temporary outdoor dining permit, no fee, and the expansion of the sidewalk, no fee, yeah, that's my amendment.
Okay.
As long as we can afford it, I'm good with it.
Okay, good.
And these are all gonna be, and this is all subject to the sidewalk, is all subject to, you know, um, the building department and/or the fire department, looking at it and making sure that it's safe and sound before it's granted anyway, correct?
The build, the, the building department and the fire inspector, correct?
Correct, okay. So, I mean, we have to, you know, they know, they, they kind of, they know their Ps and Qs and what's safety, and that's good, perfect.
Yeah, yes.
Right, and we've, um, I, I, I believe I circulated to the entire board a, uh, a proposed permit, at least for, uh, the private property one. Uh, Amy and LA and the mayor were discussing, you know, some tweaks to the, uh, current sidewalk one, but generally, the sidewalk one has, you know, what we'd be looking for, as I mentioned, insurance, things of that nature, but yeah, obviously, I shouldn't say obviously, but yes, the police, uh, building and DPW will weigh in on safety measures, as well as the fire inspector.
And that came from you, Rob?
Yeah. If, if I didn't, I'm pretty sure I sent it to the whole board, if not, I'll send it around later tonight or first thing tomorrow.
Okay, do we have any other questions or concerns?
Did, I don't know if somebody asked this before, do we have an estimate of how many parking spots might be losing during this period of time?
At this point, no, because we don't know how many restaurants are actually going to apply. I would say if all of the restaurants apply, um, twenty-five, possibly?
Wow.
But with, with, with the, the commuter spa-, the commuter lots and the, um, shoppers' lots not being filled to capacity in any way, shape, or form, we have over a thousand parking spots of inventory available. So we do have, at this time now, we do have adequate parking.
Okay.
All right, um, so we're gonna move on with the resolution?
Uh, Mayor, would you like to?
Oh, I'm sorry, we had the participation, you're right.
Yeah, um, and Mayor, I don't know if you want a time limit, right now, there's only one person who raised their hand, uh, I don't know that there's a need for a time limit.
No, and I don't see a need for a time limit, but as long as it pertains to, um, this res-, um, this resolution and this special meeting.
Yes, and, uh, just for the public out there that may wish to speak, uh, we ask you that you raise your hand, you'll be called on individually, and we'll unmute your mic so that you can speak. Uh, if you are using a tablet or a computer, you go down to the participants section, and you'll find the raised hand, uh, choice. If you're on an iPhone. choice. If you're on an iPhone or an Android with the app, you'll see that it's down at the bottom of your screen, a raised hand function. And if you're on a telephone strictly, then you can hit star nine, it'll raise your hand. So the first person we have is Alexandria Evans, and you should be unmuted. You can unmute yourself at this point. Alexandria, are you there? I see your mic is on, Alexandria. There's probably an unmute feature on your phone, Alexandria, if you could. We see you there. Alexandria, can you hear us?
I know Alexandria Evans represents the Chamber of Commerce.
Okay. Do you have a microphone that you have muted there, Alexandria? Oh, let's see. I'm going to mute, unmute you again.
Yeah, she's muted, according to my thing.
Well, she just muted herself, so.
There we go. Can you talk now, Ms. Evans? We don't hear you.
We don't hear you. Sorry.
Maybe she should call in on the phone and do, and, and we can hear her that way.
Yeah, if you, if you'd like that, Alexandria, especially on a phone that might identify you or at least the four digits of your number. So if you would perhaps log out or dial in on a phone separately, that's fine. Yeah.
Do you want to repeat the number for her to call in at?
No, that's okay. She's got it.
No, she said she needs the number.
Oh, yeah. Okay, I think I sort of was trying to read her sign, sign language. She needs the number. I don't have it in front of me. Perhaps, Michael, if you do.
Yeah, one second.
I probably get it. Let's see, login information. Is it the same numbers that we received, Michael?
Yes, it is.
Okay, I can read it. It's, if you hear me, Ms. Evans, it's 929-205-6099. So actually, you have to dial, you might have to dial a one before it. So 1-929-205-6099. You could try that. And then, I guess, press that star nine to get the hand. And you'll come through. I, did that not work? I can give you another number. I.
Oh, do you have the access code? Access code?
Oh, access code. Yes, 817-4526-1537.
Give it a minute. You might have to give the number over again.
Okay. Do you need, do you need the access code or the number? Access code. 81, yes, 817-4526-1537. I just see it, a number came up. So it might be the sevens.
Okay, if you hit star nine on your phone, we should see your hand raised.
Somebody left.
Okay, did you hit star nine? Oh, here we go. Hold on. Is that you?
That's me.
Yeah.
Yay. Okay. Hi, every. How are you all?
Good. Good. How are you?
Good. Hold on, I just lost my video. Can you see me all? Yes, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to try to make this quick. I have a lot of questions, as you can imagine, being with the chamber. I just, I know that eventually we'll have this all spelled out, but I want to make sure I'm understanding everything so far. So, right now, we are, the village is giving a permit for the outdoor dining up until Sunday, November 1st, 11 p.m., correct?
It's only on the sidewalks.
12:01, Alexander, Alexandria, 12:01 a.m., November 2nd. It expires on 12:01, November 2nd, which is a Monday.
Okay, thank you.
In essence, you're right. It ends 11 p.m. according to the rule. You're right.
Okay, so this is on the sidewalk. Now, I heard mention of municipal sidewalks. Can somebody explain where those are?
Municipal sidewalks are in front of the establishments.
Oh, okay, so I guess I'm not understanding what, where is the private?
That would be in their parking lot.
In their parking lot?
Right.
Yeah, so, so like Daniness, for example, they have their own parking lot?
Okay, got it. Okay, now, what does the village need if an establishment and restaurant is going to get permission from a neighboring storefront? Does the village need something from that neighboring storefront?
Yes, Alexandria, it will be on the application and which will also include a certificate of insurance. So if they share the adjacent, if they're going to use the adjacent sidewalk to their restaurant, they're going to obtain permission from the owner of the adjacent property and also providing a certificate of insurance.
Okay. And this is in the application that the village is drawing up?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, will be approved this evening.
Okay. And then we are allowing the outdoor dining Monday through Sunday, but Monday through Thursday, it ends at 10 p.m. and then Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and holidays till 11 p.m.?
Yes.
Okay. And I know that was mentioned about defining holidays. Are you still going to try and define holidays?
They have been defined holiday that the village follows.
Okay. Okay, and I know there was a question about whether this applies to bars, correct? We're still trying to figure that out.
Mr. Magrino, if you could speak to that point?
Well, I can, I can actually say something about that because I looked at the SLA guidance for outdoor dining effective June 4th, 2020, and the third question, Q and A, the third question down reads, are these outdoor guidelines limited to restaurants? The answer is no. All licensed, on-premises establishments. Examples, restaurants, bars, taverns, clubs, cafes, manufacturers with on-premises privileges in Phase 2 regions may, subject to the guidance above, which I guess we have to look at, resume outdoor, on-premises service of alcoholic beverages and/or food. Okay?
Okay.
That includes bars.
So, so when I, when I brought this question up, the response was, when I brought this question up, the response was that there are no standalone bars currently. I knew there were at least one on Chestnut that I remembered seeing. I, I'm not a big frequenter of bars, so I'm not sure. But apparently, there are none, so it may not matter.
When you say standalone bar, you mean a bar that does not provide food?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to say, yeah.
But don't we have a village code that you can't have a bar without serving some sort of food?
Probably. But in any case, in the guidelines, the SLA guidelines, they have to offer food, though it's not required by the patron to purchase. That's also in the Q and A.
Yeah.
Care of that. Okay, now, a question about barriers. When you mention barriers, you're speaking about barriers on either side of Lafayette Avenue. You're closing off the, the street of Lafayette Avenue from Washington, at Washington and Lafayette Avenue, and then that Orange and Lafayette Avenue? Is that what we're talking about?
No, no, Ms. Evans. Only pedestrian walkway in the parking areas, parking spots along Lafayette Avenue of the establishments that are participating. So.
Okay. I wasn't clear about that, but now that, that makes a lot of sense, okay?
Okay.
I have to say, I really do think up to those barriers, and hopefully, we won't have a problem because I think reducing the speed limit won't matter. I mean, if you have some person who's coming down the street and loses control or what have you, I think those barriers are crucial.
Well, during, just so you know, during this time, we're going to have, you know, special attention to Lafayette Avenue during this reopening phase, monitoring the roadway and enforcing traffic regulations.
Okay. Now, the only other thing. Okay, so we did have concerns about specific establishments that are not located right on Lafayette Avenue. But other two that haven't been mentioned is Plan B, which is Orange Avenue.
Okay, so they have, they have a parking lane
Right.
outside of that location.
Right, but on Orange Avenue. And I thought there was a mention that we're not comfortable, the village is not comfortable with having them closed off on Orange Avenue?
It depends on if there's a parking lane that's available. And in certain locations on Orange Avenue, there are no parking lanes. And that would go from Lafayette to Wayne. There are no parking lanes there.
Right, because where Ole Ole is situated, there are no parking lanes. That's where the bus rolls up on. Okay. Okay. Now, what about an establishment like Bee Balls, Meatballs? What do they do?
Good question. They have a parking lane on, I believe, on both sides, on, on Boulevard and on Prairie.
They do.
Yeah.
Yep. And they have a parking lot in the back?
Yes.
Oh, I didn't know.
Small, yes.
It's not huge, but it's a parking lot in the back.
Probably, no, it's like one or two, two cars, probably, right, Joe?
Something about that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But that, that's a good, that's a good one to bring up because they have a parking lot, like you said, on, parking lane on each side, but when you're on the actual corner where they are, where the door, where the door comes out, there's, there is no parking per se in that first X number of feet in each direction. So we'd have to figure out what we're going to do there. I don't know if we barrier the entire corner or, or what, but.
Well, we can, based on the inspector, based on the building inspector's input, you know, we can develop a plan.
Yeah. I, I have a question, Mayor, that just came to my mind about egress, like for ADA ramps, that sort of thing, between regular sidewalk and temporary parking lane pedestrian areas. Is this something that we have to put up some ramps for people that might not be able to walk to get from this regular sidewalk onto the parking lane and then back up onto the sidewalk at the end of the establishment?
Great point. So what we can do is possibly create some type of transitional device from the curb to the roadway. It's a very short step. I mean, I think the repea, one on that is maybe five inches.
Correct. It's not very much. It's not very much, but I just wanted to bring it up. It's something that couldn't come up.
We can get temporary, like folding ramps or something along those lines.
Okay. I just, I think we should address it, that's all. It should probably be addressed in the permit. Maybe make the, maybe make the business owner responsible for that or something.
I think we have to make this as easy as possible on the business owner.
Okay.
We need to get this up and running. We need to have our, our village flourishing again. I don't, I want to keep the burden the lowest on the business owners.
Okay.
But we will definitely address it.
I'm just concerned. I mean, it's, it's, there's a cost involved, so.
And they are things that are available.
Right.
Little, little plastic ramps that you just laid out. They're available.
Yeah. We will look at that. Charles, can you look into that? Charles, the Wiki.
Charles, you can unmute yourself if you like.
Miss the Wiki? Is he muted? Michael?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah. Can you look into the, like a transitional type of plastic or rubber ramp to transition from the curb, from the sidewalk to the asphalt into the walkway?
Yeah, I'll look into it. I'm unaware of anything off the top of my head, but I'll certainly look into it.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Two last. Can I go ahead?
Yeah.
As far as the music is concerned, am I correct that it's going to be allowed all seven days a week? Whoever chooses to do on a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, as long as it's done by 10 p.m. Monday through Thursday and 11 p.m. on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and.
10 p.m. for all days.
10 p.m.
That's consistent with the village code.
Okay. And what did we, what, I don't remember what anybody said about what Tefila Salilimon do.
That would be, that would have to be looked at and analyzed with the building department, if they were participating in the permit.
Okay. So now, I'm done, and I guess my next step would be to try to get this expedited is to contact all the restaurants and find out who's going to be participating and have them get in touch with the village. How soon will the application be available?
If all goes well and it's approved tonight, it'll be ready tomorrow. I have been walking the village, talking to many of the business owners, and we want to expedite this to get us up and running, start up suffering, and I think, you know, working together with the chamber and myself and the village clerk, Amy Pavonrod, and the building department, we'll get this done within a couple of days.
Okay.
And the paperwork will be ready tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, Mayor.
Yes.
We now have Bruce Simon. Bruce, I'm asking you to, there you go, Bruce.
Good evening, all. Hope everybody's having a good day so far. Just a very quick question, something not addressed in the resolution. Do the restaurant owners have to take the tables and chairs in every night and replace them out? Do the restaurant owners have to take the tables and chairs in every night and replace them out the next morning, or will they be leaving them on the sidewalk?
Good question.
It's not addressed in the resolution.
If they wanted.
I'm sorry, Charles?
But we're not mandating it. So I would say, no, that they're not required to, unless the board chooses to make that a requirement. But that would be somewhat burdensome to the operation. But I would make mention, I'm sure that they would secure the tables and chairs, you know, to each other during overnight hours.
I'm just suggesting that you want that to be in the resolution, whichever way the board goes with it.
No, it's actually in the application. So in the application process, that's one of the requirements.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, it looks like Martina Senarli, if I have that said correctly. We're gonna ask you to unmute. There you go.
Yes, hello. Good evening. Thank you so much for this fantastic meeting. I have a question regarding, can you see me also? I don't know. But regarding the loading zones, can you repeat just how this would work with the loading zone? Someone like a truck comes and has to drop off food or something?
With the loading zone, the trucks are required to do all the loading and unloading in and at the loading zone. So I believe there are no restaurants that are in front of a loading zone.
Yeah.
So loading and unloading should go on as normal, unless they're in violation of the vehicle and traffic law.
So what does this mean, like in the meanwhile, the loading off and on, like, let's say, off, like some, what is this, like beer barrel or whatever? They can use then the barriers, where the barriers are, where the parking?
No, it has nothing to do with the loading zone, the barriers, no.
Okay, so they know what to do then, actually, the owners?
Yes.
Also, like, in the application included, so they know what to do then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you. So to build on that point, if we have an adjacent business that approves for the next-door restaurant to expand, we probably would not grant that if it was in front of a loading zone. Is that fair to say?
That's fair.
Yeah, I would say you wouldn't want to take away the loading and unloading from anyone, which would impact any other business.
Okay.
Okay, the next speaker is Michael Curley.
Good evening, Mayor and the board, and everyone there. I'd like to thank the village board for being proactive on this, to help the businesses in Suffolk. I think it's also important, there's other businesses in Suffolk that we need to help, those furniture stores and knickknacks. So if we can all, you know, shop and stuff, and especially harder now, because we're in competition with all these other local businesses around in other towns. Maybe what we should do in the next time coming too, we can look at these other municipalities surrounding us and see if they're going a little further, even help the restaurants and businesses more, you know, just try and get some ideas together. As far as the question, according to, you can't get a C of O in a village of Suffolk unless you sell food. So you have to have food also, or else you can't even operate. There is no place in Suffolk right now, or ever that I know of, that whether they do it on their own, they're doing it incorrectly, but the village won't give you a C of O without selling food. So you're supposed to, everyone's supposed to have a refrigerator, and whether it's just hot dogs, whether they sell, they have to have a minimal to do that in the village of Suffolk. The state liquor authority has been very fair, and again, I thank Rob Magrino. I think he's worked very hard here, and I would say probably the village clerk also, and I want to thank them for their work in expediting this. I'd like to, if you decide to sell liquor at the village pool, just put it out to everybody when the village pool opens. I had to bring it to you. I didn't, you said you had to be related to this issue, so I did that for you. And I'd like to say, I'd like to invite the whole village board on me, if they decide to come here together and sit together, okay? I'm allowed to bring a guest, okay? There can't be, no politics. And I'll have a joke about each of us individually. Thank you for your hard work, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I didn't want to take up all of your tables at once.
All right, is there anyone else in the queue?
No, Mayor, there isn't.
Okay, okay. The board, do you have any further questions in regards?
No, a lot of information. Thank you, Rob. Very well put together. Amazing.
Thank you. I, you know, I just, I can't resist. The issue came up about the bars. The point about the bars was that, as the two callers mentioned, it indicates that you can, somebody could just sit at a table and not have to order food, which was, you know, I thought very specific from the state, so that's out there.
Okay.
No, thank you. You know, I had a lot of help, as you know, I worked on this with, you know, down in Orange Town as well. So, and interestingly, both, you know, municipalities have different issues. Orange Town has more places that have the parking lots. This has more places than have the sidewalks. So I think we have it covered, but, you know, I think everybody's on the same page in terms of getting things open. So thank you to the board.
I'll tell you, thanks, Rob. You and Amy together really did a fantastic job. So thank you to the village clerk, and to Rob Magrino, and the board, and working together. So I think it's a great thing. Startup Suffering is kicking in, hopefully tomorrow. If we get this passed this evening, we'll be, you know, boots on the ground, handing out these applications, and getting our village up and running.
Yes, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Amy also. She put a lot of work into this as well.
Sure did, absolutely. Okay, so at this time, I'll present the resolution about the rising modifications to the Village of Suffolk Table and Chairs Program to assist local restaurants reopen in accordance with New York State Executive Orders issued by the Governor of the State of New York. Do I have a motion?
Motion, Trustee Barone.
Trustee Barone, second trustee Corrigan. Any additional discussion?
Were they tied in somewhere?
In favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? No. Great job. Thank you very much.
Have a great night, everybody.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you, and we'll talk to you soon.
Excellent.
Thanks. Everyone keep safe.
Bye now.